This conference will now be recorded.
I think it's Tuesday, October. Agenda is in my box. Is there a motion to approve the agenda? I made motion, is there second? Will you favor say aye? Um, through the minutes of the afternoon. Is there a question? Is there a second? Any further discussion?
Aye.
Good morning. Do I have September fees for you? It was one of seven thousand, six hundred and ninety-eight dollars.
Motion to approve sheriff's report?
I need to approve the sheriff's report for seven thousand, six hundred and ninety-eight dollars.
Can we motion, is there second?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. Second head?
We're going to have the local meeting, we'll ask the meeting. Uh, we've done the agenda that we discussed, the board accepted and signed or agreed to a twenty-eight degree of two eighty-degree degree of Mitchell. Uh, we went through the water field project, uh, made payment number three on that water field project moving along through the route. Uh, with the movement, it'll be four time three, hopefully today if the rain stops, we'll finish up at time three on Thursday, and then T thirty-eight could be started by the end of the week. We're moving through, go around that process. I had a request for final objection with the IUC commission, um, that's tabled. Uh, other things that were discussed, uh, November meeting is being moved back from November eleventh to investment day, from November twelfth, we could do that Wednesday. Tourism video is going on, that we are working, uh, we are on ten conservation boards, so we can go ahead and do tourism videos, uh, for Iowa tourism and the CTF board. We're working on that aspect of it. The albino deer that was located up in St. Ansgard has been relocated into nature center, so that is brought up to date. Uh, the wave beachin' hunt will be going on, uh, here when the preseason starts, and they're looking at helping fund raised lions for conservation board, so we can help lions in a couple of our areas. And, uh, we'll talk about park closing and some grants mentioned for the company. I think stuff that we discussed at the meeting.
The albino deer was really nice.
We're excited to have it, and another part of this is fun. None less, thanks for.
So, Rachel, I just need your signature, I thought you guys all the contract to the floor. Um, the solar origin? I'll just put this in here.
Thank you.
And then I was just gonna ask about the elder bridge, but you guys didn't come to that.
If you found we follow suit with every, every other entity that we have, I just think that's a good point, I think that would make sense to follow that process.
And I just, I just have, uh, this time for Rachel, people requested for the open meetings, uh, trainings, ISAC is doing that also. Because of the dues that we pay them, so we're going to invest plan for those organizations, which we would, if we approved it, they can do the ISAC.
I had just asked Rachel earlier, or, um, this week, that, or I guess it might even have been last week, if people have items of business or reports, they can get them to Rachel by like Monday morning, so that we don't have stuff landing on our table in the day of a meeting, where we have to try to review it while we're trying to conduct business. So, I don't know if that's something that we would need to have to have a policy for, or maybe that's something we can ask her in the lines. I just think that helps us to all be better prepared when, when we hit the meeting floor. So, if whatever.
We always have to go anything Friday?
Yeah, by Friday, but lately it seems like, you know, a lot of things have been landed either on our desk, or even the department, you know, reports, because you don't really have much time to go through them before, if people are here, or if other people are presenting. Rachel does a great job of gathering everything that gets to her, you know, ahead of time, but we can.
Any other department head? We'll move on to county engineer, and he is not here today, unfortunately has been training. So, we have a pre-construction agreement for STP dash zero zero nine dash six, and, um, we have that in kind of what? Touch base, we'll talk about that in a few. Don't want to go through it?
Yes, so we're gonna, the D O P is gonna do H hot mixed ass call, H and A research. Four mile corner to Riceville, towards next year. And what county's been doing, this time for the public, the board has just got the county in the past has done a lot of what's called those filllets that are off of the main line of the road back on the gravel on there, or a section of gravel. So, what this agreement is, is just to agree to pay for that, pay for the road. There's a lot of things, there's eighteen of them, estimated cost is a hundred and forty thousand.
Is there a motion to approve?
I need to approve pre-construction agreement for STP dash zero zero nine dash six, oh eight six dash dash two C dash sixty-six.
Can I make a motion, is there a second? Mark, second? Any further discussion? For call mark? Sam? Sydney? Aye. Jim? About eight forty-five yet, and it's down. Move down to approve clerk's report, report for September. Number ten, please. We have one thousand, six hundred and thirty-three dollars and ninety-eight cents. There's motion to approve? Make that motion. I made motion, is there a second? Jim, second? Any further discussion? Call Jim?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Sydney? Aye. Motion. Number eleven, approve liquor license for Osage folks, numbered seven nine two zero, veterans of foreign wars, over United States. We have a liquor license with license, name, sharing. More motion to approve?
We'll make a motion.
Mark made motion, is there a second?
I seconded.
Sam, seconded, any further discussion? Call back.
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Aye.
Sydney? Aye. Motion passed. Discussion and possible action on home base Iowa application? Any?
Good morning. Alright, so I have an application from Daisy McKenna, he was relocated from West Liberty to two nine one seven four hundred and forty street in Riceville. Um, as part of the agreement to be home based out of community, you guys have already committed to a thousand dollars incentive for individuals that moved to out of county. Um, so he's provided me with the application and all the other paperwork that I need, so I'm just taking these as a call for that. Looks like I'm getting a little older.
Is there a motion to approve?
Thank you, please.
Can I make a motion, is there a second?
I seconded.
Sam, second? Any further discussion? For call mark?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Sydney? Aye. Motion passed. Thank you. We have three minutes. I'm not gonna move forward to the IT one, if we could try to figure out the sound, it's still not working. I use online, I don't know if there's anything else we could try? Shows on there like it's working. We can hear about it. And now it's. In that case, it won't be really fine. Well, it's he got his focus on you and everything else.
Just, yeah.
It's like the other two options, it doesn't come up at all. This is the only one that puts like the green box around it.
If we have to just put it on speakerphone.
They can have it. Only tested the handle part of it on Friday.
Yeah, I was gonna say, and you just worked on it.
Yeah, we could work the speakers, we can speak to them on the phone. Okay.
Eight forty-five. Public hearing on the proposed amendment to the Mitchell County urban renewal area, we will open the public hearing at eight forty-five.
Okay, speaker hiding, wanna test that, is it loud enough?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay.
I can definitely hear you if, um, somebody else is just talking.
Okay. Any oral or written comments received in the board? Yep?
Aye.
And none?
I had some oral comments, um, asking why we would be supporting a project for only one of the four nonprofit nursing homes in the county. Um, there was some unrest about that concept. There was also some questions about the conservation projects and the extent of dollars being spent on the conservation projects, um, as far as that's concerned. So, uh, we had asked for some occupancy numbers, it appears that their occupancy on all five of the, um, current campgrounds, facilities, as they are, are down. It's been a year of rain, so that wouldn't be unexpected, you know, a lot of people didn't go camping because of all the, the rainy weather, or they didn't stay as long as they planned, without a doubt, as far as that's concerned. So, I, I ran the numbers and, um, the, the one campground that has maybe had a great deal of improvement recently, um, is the Riverside Campground at Stacyville. And, um, unfortunately, those numbers were even down, and, you know, we're, we're gonna hope that that was just due to weather and that, um, you know, maybe the camping season this year. But the concern that people have is the extent of the projects and the amount of, um, TIF dollars being spent in those areas. It isn't that people are opposed to doing some improvements on some campgrounds, um, it's that, that maybe the extent of some of the projects that have been proposed and the dollars that would be expended, um, on backs of a TIF dollar project are of great concern to constituents in that area.
We're all against these projects. Hey, none.
Rachel, have you submitted to the office?
No, I just had to send out copies of the article.
Public. Any public comments?
Just have one concern because of the, um, the plan for the urban development area along the Cedar River, with the CO2 pipeline being as close as it will be as the proposed route is. If we don't let the, um, I U C become aware of this plan, you know, they'll just go ahead and possibly approve it as it is. So, right now it's within a half mile and crosses the Cedar River also, so that's just another high list area for all these dollars. And a week, I guess I'd add to that, a week of, um, CO2 into the water turns the water to carbon and to acid, so it would not be safe for fish, plants, or people.
Any more public comments to the urban real plan?
Guess I have a couple of comments, regards to the nursing homes, you've heard that comment a number of times, and I guess I'm not opposed to helping any of the other nursing homes, looking at a building project that they might have. But the thought that we are helping one, but not the other ones, is the other ones have not come to us about anything. And if we're only going to help nonprofit nursing homes, if all four of them are having building projects at the same time, that's what would have to happen in terms of that thought process. This nursing home came to us, personally, I think it's, you've spent, this board and other boards, total, have spent over half, over a million dollars for daycares. But then when it comes to our elderly, or people in need of a nursing home, we're having a problem assisting one of them that does come to us. So, I don't quite understand that, that process or that, that thinking. And in regard, in regards to the campground, uh, the conservation board feels that the camping numbers can come up if we improve those campground. So, I respect, they're the ones that manage that, I respect their opinion as far as to improve the county by doing that.
So, you know, I would agree that, you know, we've only heard from one nursing home, and, and we heard from them because they had a substantial project that they're trying to kick off. And it isn't that I don't support nursing homes in this county, that's not the case at all. Um, I think the concern is that, and, and I quote, "When did the board of supervisors become an open checkbook for everybody that walked in the door?" Um, as far as the campgrounds that we've made tremendous improvements to, or bringing people into the county from other areas to camp, um, Riverside is at a sixty-eight point six percent, uh, occupancy for two thousand twenty-five so far, and at the same timeframe last year, they were at seventy-seven percent. So, I think when, when people drive around, and we, those are the numbers, those are the numbers. The visuals that people have is, you know what, we're spending a whole lot of money on campgrounds to try to draw people in, and the ones that we have already expensed a considerable amount of money are not drawing droves and droves of people. That's one of the reasons that I asked for the occupancy, because, um, we want to be able to support these projects, we want to be able to show improvements. Um, as far as your concern for daycares, yes, we have spent dollars on daycares. And, and the, the challenge with that is that you can't bring people into your county, you can't keep people in your county if you don't have daycare facilities to take care of their children. Now, granted, we also need to care for our elderly. I, I'm, I'm not saying that, that we don't, but is it the county's responsibility to take care of all the nursing homes as well? And the question was, when did that process start? And I have not heard one single person that's been opposed to the daycare project, I have heard support for some conservation spending, but not to the tune of three point seven million dollars.
You used an incorrect word regards to my comment, I do not have a concern about daycare. It was simply a comparison as far as we spent daycare, having a nursing home, so it was not a concern about what we spent on those.
Well, one thing on the campground, the information you got there, it's a short window of two years, it doesn't reflect the overall camping. When we did do the upgrades with Chip funding at Riverside Park, that park made six thousand dollars a year, that was it. Now, with the upgrades that we did do, it pulled over close to fifty thousand dollars even revenue. So, the statement of, well, we're not getting anybody to go in there is incorrect, because we did do the upgrades, and the revenue that came off the park has increased, then both, we're going from making maybe five to six thousand dollars a year to fifty. The reason numbers are going down, which we've heard, a lot of people who have contacted us love the fact that we are going to be doing upgrades to those parks, is because, they understand, they're going somewhere else, they're going to the neighboring counties, because they are putting the infrastructure that we want to put into our campground. They're, they're leaving our campgrounds to go to somewhere that the infrastructure has been done, and a prime example of that is Lake Hendricks over there in Riceville. They're putting the infrastructure in that the generation that's camping now wants. If we continue to not do anything with these campgrounds, if we do not do the upgrades, the numbers will continue to go down, because we're not putting the infrastructure in. But when we did do the upgrades like at Riverside Park, we saw the increase of our camping. The numbers you have there, we got from the last two years, it's a small window, Interstate Park is up, but because Interstate Parks numbers are way up, it would be because last year it was closed mostly due to the storm flooding event. So, no one was camping at the parks, so of course this year it was open every weekend, this last year, I think we had like five weekends where it was closed. So, the bullet stop process on it is, we gotta do something, otherwise we continue to fall behind that eight ball of the other campground that is coming through the country. That's why we're doing the upgrades that are needed now, and infrastructure and that is just gonna get more and more expensive as we.
And that's, I, I appreciate your comments, and, and I have shared that with a lot of individuals that have asked, um, because I support conservation in this county. And we have brought people in, I drive by the, the Riverside campgrounds, and there are people that are camping there right now, and, um, as far as that's concerned. I think the challenge comes with, we have to be cognizant of the fact that the state of Iowa and Mitchell County are funded by agricultural tax dollars. And I think if you talk to any Iowa economic individual, they will share with you the fact that Iowa's income on property values, land solely on the backs of the farming community. Now, whether we like that or not, the fact remains that these, this year and the next few years perhaps, maybe some very tough commodity price years. So, my concern is, we are going to kick out, uh, nearly six million dollars in expenses for some things to bring some people into the county, when in fact, maybe we need to take care of the people that we have here now. And God forbid that we come back next year and say, oh, by the way, we need to hide the property tax. Because I think that's just physically irresponsible. We have to be cognizant of, of our consumers, our customers, and that is the constituents in this county, the people that are here.
To be clear, this is not property tax dollars that we have been paying for, this is TIF dollars, which is.
So, maybe you can explain.
To be clear, this is TIF dollars, that is, you know, the value of the benefits that have been created. So, this is not property tax dollars that we're paying. And in order, and also to speak to you, I'm not anti-agriculture, but people in this state have complained for years of why our youth always move away, especially in rural areas. We can't retain our youth, we can't keep them here. Agriculture is the big commodity for the whole state, why is not agriculture keeping our youth in rural, rural Iowa? We have to do things in order to keep people in this county. One of the things is to do something like the park projects. People want to not just have to work in this county, the county is not just a workhouse. You need to have something that people actually like to do when they're here, that retains people to live here, it makes people want to come here and live here. And even if people aren't living here, it brings money from other counties to this county to make money in this county. And so, you have to invest in yourself in order to get something out of it.
And, and I'm not disputing any of those comments, Jim, I'm not disputing any of those comments. I'm just saying that we also need to be aware of the fact, we lost recently a large manufacturing facility. We would be better off to reserve some of those funds to try to entice some other businesses into our community as opposed to spending all of those dollars in conservation projects or parks, where in fact, we are still in northern Iowa. Now, the, the other comment that was made to me, which I was remiss in not mentioning, was the fact that, you know, there are a lot more bicyclists in this county, and other counties are joining the counties. And that was even brought up by yourself last week, and so people have asked, could we, uh, promote some bike trails, more bike trails? Would we be better off to spend some money that way, that's bringing, bringing people down? So, I think the question isn't, are the projects? So I think the question isn't, are the projects good? Or is it, is it a good idea to spend some dollars in these areas? The question is, how many dollars are we spending?
Any other public comments? Don't see any online. Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing at nine AM. Moving on to number eight, resolution to declare Mississippi and establish an expanded urban renewal area pursuant to section four oh three point four of the Code of Iowa and approve the Urban Renewal Plan Amendment for the Mitchell County Urban Renewal Area. So we have that and.
Heidi, do you want to make any comments on any of these next two agenda items or await questions or what, what would you like to do?
I have a answering question. This is just adding the project to the plan. Think the board wants to choose to want to move forward with this project or not, these projects or not. Um, but it's just putting those, those legal aim for the plan. Should the county want to move forward on the projects?
What, resolution number? Thirteen twenty-two dash twenty-five. Ten twenty-two. Motion to approve?
Move to approve resolution fifteen twenty-two dash twenty-five.
In main motion, is there a second?
A second.
All right, second. Any further discussion? Roll call Pam.
Yay.
Sidney.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Todd.
Aye.
Mark.
No.
Motion passes. Resolution setting date for a public hearing on the proposal to incur non-current debt is going to be November twelfth at eight forty-five AM. Correct? Your motion? I made a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Jim, second. Any further discussion?
So this is the um, non-current debt of nine hundred thousand for local option sales tax to be paid back within the fiscal year. Is that correct, Heidi? And that is because we don't have enough tip dollars to support all those projects.
If you, if you have the ten dollars in order to use, tell that you have to create a debt.
Correct.
This will, this will provide that debt. With that transfer to the local option debt tax to your, um, to your project fund. Um, and then the tip dollars will be back to the local option debt.
But some of these projects could have been funded by some of the local option sales tax dollars.
Yes, and now we're going to draw down all of the local option sales tax.
Correct. But by moving it, we are, we are moving it out of that fund and moving to the tip fund. So granted, we might make a percent on that money, but it won't be available for any other, any other projects that would be, where we would be able to use local option sales tax dollars.
Um, that, that nine hundred thousand plus interest will be transferred back into the local option debt tax fund in the fiscal year, so it will be available.
Right.
Starting in July.
Right, next fiscal year. Correct.
Roll call Sidney. Aye. Jim.
Aye.
Todd.
Aye.
Mark.
No.
Pam.
No.
Motion passes. Thank you, Heidi.
Thank you much.
All right, looks like we are, thank you for everyone that was here today. Moving on to number thirteen, discussion and action on IT applicants. Did everyone have a good week of opportunity to look over those applicants? Look over the numbers, watch videos.
I looked them all over and I, again, like I said last week, uh, the team that was put together, I, I'm thinking they're making a pretty good choice.
It was a nice cross-section of users.
So. We still call that person applicant A? That what we're talking about? Todd, is that what we're talking about?
Yes.
We can talk about wages, right?
What's that?
We can talk about wages, right? Yeah? All right, applicant A wanted uh, a hundred and fifteen thousand per year. With five weeks of vacation?
Two.
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 I don't know where I saw five then.
I think he, that was email.
But he's currently getting a patent.
That's very true.
Oh, okay. That's what I read. All right. Any other discussions on it? Everyone okay with that?
So I'm looking at the, I brought up the, I brought up the offer and you sent the signature, correct? As I said, okay. I have an offer.
Yes, that, we haven't approved it yet. But we got that signature. So last time the way that it worked, the hiring committee put together, the offer had it signed and came to you as a board. So what did you live, Greg hired someone, Mike hired someone, Laura. They hire, um, then you guys gave the final, last name. Want to make sure we're in our correct review here.
And background check is complete. All the systems are go now.
I can speak for that, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I got an email from Rachel yesterday completing the background check. It'll be completed today, but knowing the applicant, I don't anticipate any red flags whatsoever. But it'll be completed.
Okay, so we would say pending completion of the background check.
That's good language to use.
I didn't know if that had gotten through yet or not.
No.
Thank you.
Rachel's done her part, I'll do mine.
Perfect.
Thank you, Cher.
I just wanted to make sure that we had that in there.
Yes.
Good? Looking at you.
Yeah, my bits.
All right. Okay.
I'm done. The motion has to be moved correctly.
Are we doing, I, we, in that discussion of email that you sent us, Rachel? It said, and correct me if I'm wrong, a hundred and fifty or a hundred and fifteen, but uh, he only gets the fifteen after sixty days. That doesn't have to be, did we go with that or we just went with that straight out?
And, and I can maybe speak to some of the reason that that.
That's okay.
I make a motion to hire applicant A for a hundred and fifteen thousand. Pass the background.
Is that a good enough motion?
I second that motion.
Yeah, it's over.
To the offer. Oh, shit!
I think that's fine. I think the offer also, that's fine, Mark, but I think it also needs to include the, um, based on, based on the, based on the employment offering package sent to the applicant and signed by the county and the applicant. Just feel that needs to be in there.
Do you care of that one? So are you, you want to reword that?
No, I'll leave it the way it was. He signed it the way he, he said it.
I think what Jim said, I heard me wrong, but I think what Jim's trying to say is the motion should include a package.
Yes.
Not, not simply the salary, there's another thing to go with, right? There's going to be vacation goes with it, presumably there's going to be benefits to go with it. Um, and now I'm not saying you don't, you don't have to like recite every thing necessarily. Although it's of public interest, so I mean, the public term has a right. No, I would never say otherwise. Um, but maybe you can refer to the motion as uh, you know, move to hire him with the compensation package that's been forwarded to him. I think there was a document that went to him that recited something.
The rea, the reason I say that is that the hiring committee does not have the authority to hire somebody. And they do not have the authority to approve dollars for somebody. These five people do that. And that's why I think the motion needs to be clear that we are the ones that hired him. We are the ones that are agreeing to the package that was sent to him, not the hiring committee. They don't have that authority. By code, they don't have that authority.
Correct.
That's my reason.
But he signed the package that we offered him.
I said what I said and I don't want to get into it anymore, really. Really, I don't want to get into it anymore.
Well, it's a motion, second on paper.
Okay.
So, so we would need to vote on that and then you can either amend it or have a new motion.
What's the motion?
What's your motion?
Hundred and fifteen thousand would be passed as a background check.
About everything else?
Yes.
Well, that's the motion I get.
That's the motion that's. Amendment his motion, so now.
And I second it, so.
Why are you not, I want to go amend the motion, just make it particularly fine.
But by, by the rules of order, you have to follow that process, so.
I, I'm familiar, you don't.
No, 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 don't. I mean, that's, that's what I.
There could be an amendment.
There, there could be, so if Mark is not wanting to do, if Mark is not wanting to do an amendment to his motion, then let's go. Mark and Pam. Any further discussion? Roll call Pam.
Aye.
Sidney.
No.
Jim.
No.
Todd.
No.
Mark.
Aye.
Motion does not pass.
We're still having agenda items, so I'd be hoping to. The motion.
I move to approve applicant A had a hundred and fifteen thousand with the package that was provided by him to include vacation time and other benefits pending a background check.
That's more appropriate.
Thank you. No, no, I was just getting the process.
If you like, if somebody simply says, oh, we're going to hire to pay this guy this much. Well, what about the other stuff? Now we're going to ignore that. And it's like, well, why would you do that?
All right.
Make these sense.
Thank you, Aaron.
Well, don't cut me off because some of the stuff needs to be noted. Because some of the stuff, anyway, whatever.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Handmade a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Jim?
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call Mark.
Aye.
Todd.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Sidney.
Aye.
Pam.
Aye.
Motion passes. Discussion about for action on compensation board. Anyone bring anything to the table?
So, so I was able to secure from ISACS, um, the listing of the counties that, um, last year, the state, um, reduced commissions and boards. And one of those steps was the compensation board. And upon that action, fifty-five counties filed suit. So fifty-five of the ninety-nine no longer have a compensation board and use their Board of Supervisors for that process for the, uh, elected, you know, reviewing the salary schedule for elected officials. So. I do have a, a person that would be interested to take the position of the individual that resigned. If you choose to go that direction. Um, I called some of those counties and the comments were that they decided quite easily, since the state had decided that was no longer a requirement, that it seemed like it was an extra step and caused some additional concerns for people. Even though the supervisors are the ones to make the final, um, agreement to those compensation board notes. They felt that it was just an extra unneeded level of government and so that was, I got heard back from four supervisors from the ones that I contacted. So, and the ISACS team had provided me the information of how many were now not, no longer using a board of compensation.
So you have a person, anyone else?
I, I'm in a disagreement with that. Our county attorney has told us for years to not go, not go that direction. So I'm definitely in favor of compensation. That's just me.
I would agree. I, I toiled with that back and forth, but the, the thing that always comes out is that I think it's a, it's a different committee that, um, makes a recommendation and then, yes, we make that final call. But as I said, it was last week, I just need to make sure they show the work because I want to know how they came up with their numbers. And uh, I had presented last year's, uh, information on my desk, which was great. And I think that needs to happen every year. They didn't know how they came up with their numbers. We might not go with those numbers. But the compensation board has a public hearing, public meeting, the public can come to if they want. It's not, it's not in the people's eyes that the board is setting wages on their own for everybody. It's a second opinion basically, so I'm for it.
So in light of that, I would like to, do I present a name or?
Do we have any other names, just Pam have?
I did not get.
Mark? Okay.
So I had asked Julie Tomy from St. Ansgar. She is a, a assist with Focus Insurance there in St. Ansgar. She's also a farm gal that, uh, they farm several acres of ground. So she would also have that background as far as, um, the farming community and, and the business community. And as a financial sense, they did a financial sense and has served on other boards. And I asked her if she would consider serving and she said that she would.
Obviously she assisted the insurance.
So she actually sets up a lot of the policies, she works with.
So, she actually sets up a lot of the policies. She works with a lot of people on, right now, she's busy swamped, working on a lot of the, uh, health insurance policies that have to be taken care of. She does a lot of that, has facilitated a lot of those projects and policies. And she's also served on the St. Ansgar daycare board, and-
When someone makes a motion, are we approving the compensation board and just person? Harry, correct me if I'm wrong, but that board is as in place because of the resolution last year, you guys will be approving.
Yeah, it's already in place.
Yeah, since we did drop it last year, yeah, yeah. That was one interesting.
Actually, I think the way it was, was all conflict resolved, unless the resolution's passed, established, and that's what happened here.
Yeah.
So it's in place.
I just wanted to make sure we didn't have to do it again. All right, so we have Julie Tomy as a, a role question person for the supervisors. Any more changes to them?
Make a motion to Julie.
I guess I thought I'd just add, I'm sorry. That work, that works. I'll second it. All right, good. Mark and Pam, any further discussion? Roll call, Sydney. Aye, Jim?
Aye.
Uh, aye, Mark?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
I just, I can ask you something real quick? Yeah, to the public, yeah. Um, we just got a link that letters come out office, and it has then come to the treasurer's attention statewide that, um, individuals, when they put their mail in the local post offices, they can take it to O Sage, St. Ansgar, Wrightsville, they package them up and take them to their central processing area. So a lot of people that put their mail in on September thirtieth, that post might have to return first. That's a statewide issue.
Oh, wow.
Um, so if people want to get the postmark, they need to go into the postal office and have them hand cancel it, or do it a couple days earlier, because you have not guaranteed, even if it's before pickup time at the local office. And we have a lot of them who postmark after we've reached it statewide. Grass has been contacted. It's been a big concern. We've had a lot of upset individuals. And I have codes as we go with posthand, even though we know the process is not great, that we don't have exceptions to that. That is just the, we have the drop box, but if they're going to use the post office, don't count on that day giving that day's. For us, and also for, I mean, for tax time, and as we're planning to know that, that has been a change that hit every county in Iowa.
Thank you.
Will you be able to remind us come next spring?
Yeah, and since, since you both are down here and chairs, and thank you all for being on the-
Yes.
The hiring committee. We really do appreciate it. Thank you. Just wanted to leave that. I don't know if anyone's missing this. All right, meeting's attended. Oh, yeah, you want to go back, Pam, you think?
We jumped over you.
We jumped over you.
Okay.
Are you sure? Thank you, Aaron.
Thanks, Aaron.
Have a great day.
I had an ICAU executive committee meeting, and then there was, uh, financial committees, uh, there was, uh, the transit buses use a radio system that's based on towers and rental of those towers is becoming very expensive. The transportation director found a, uh, radio type system that basically is, uh, similar to a cellphone type transmission. Yes, it still uses towers, they don't have to pay the rental on the towers. So they're going to save significantly on, uh, significantly on that, uh, plan. And then, uh, through personnel policy changes proposed, considering that part division insurance as employee Medicaid, which would be paid by the employee. The juvenile detention services meeting. Reimbursements that they're getting from the ASOs, uh, have improved drastically. State paid Medicaid has also improved with the new system that's out, so things are looking good. They'll see how the future goes as the state fine tunes things. Sometimes it tends to find, even find to better, sometimes not so. So they'll see how it goes, things are good at the moment, because right now. The director has had issues in the past with, uh, the way the state reimburses juvenile detention systems. There are nine in the state, and three of them end up getting seventy percent of the reimbursement, I believe is what it is. Yeah. Seventy, three, three of them get seventy percent of what goes to the all nine juvenile, uh, detention facilities. Now, those three are the three largest where the problem is not that they get the most, but the formula is, uh, not good as far as what the state's put together. And if I remember right, there's a hundred, no, two hundred and seventy-two beds that the state has allowed in the whole state. They won't up the number, and as far as North Iowa is concerned, they could use more beds, but they, they can't get anything from these other detention services, even though there's openings for beds that could be released, transferred to them. They won't do it because that would lower their reimbursement. The state should allow for more beds because there's a need. I can get into all the statistics, but I'm not going to do that. It's just basically, we should be improving on that formula for what gets reimbursed to them. And then I had an O Sage city council meeting last night. Their, uh, street improvement projects are coming to a, are coming to a close as far as final payoffs have been done. Their pilot plant for their projected water treatment facility is, uh, wrapping up, so they're starting to be able to know what they need to do in order to, uh, build the facility to treat the water correctly. And then they discussed an ordinance regarding, uh, parking regulations in the town. There ends up being a lot of, uh, job trailers, trailers, campers, different types of things that are parked on the streets and sometimes close to intersections, which have caused accidents, and so we're just, just see what they can do to improve that problem. That's all I have.
I have the most dominating this week.
I had the conservation meeting last week, and Mike pretty much rolled through, uh, all the business that they had.
I just had the idea of a local meeting. Um, I had a fair board meeting. I'm saying everybody's in the field, and it rained a lot, so we went ahead and had a meeting. Talked to On Grounds Entertainment, um, Stone Age, who's been here for two or four years, um, enjoys coming. He's got a new, uh, program that he's going to be, um, bringing. He's had the same entertainment. Now, next year, he's going to have a different showing, so he's excited about that. And some, uh, Grandpa Crochet, who hasn't been here for about three, maybe four years, a really good kid show that he's, um, but he made, uh, did, he's got more characters and different things. So, anyway, um, he would like to come back, so he's going to be back. Um, still tweaking, uh, grandstands events. As of now, I'm thinking it's, it's going to be the same, other than different, um, like the tractor truck pull will be a different, uh, group of pullers. And then the demo derby may be a little different. Like I say, they're still working on that. Uh, that Sunday morning Easy Riders breakfast, um, contacted them again. They, they want to be back. They were sold out. It went over really well. Going to do some more improvements to the food court. It's got two or three different colors to the tin that they use, so they're going to try and get that looking like the rest of the new building. Grandstand lighting, they want to, uh, maybe improve that. And then, um, something that's kind of nice, uh, some, uh, people that, there's those benches that sit around and people, uh, in memory of, they buy them, and there's several families that wanting to order them, sell them for their, in memory of their kids and different things. That's, uh, pretty nice. And then, I'm not sure if, uh, any of the other board members got this email, but, um, I received an email from former auditor. Um, now she's a, uh, board supervisor in Floyd County, and she received it from the gentleman Trial City Area Development Corporation that wanted to thank the board of supervisors for the, um, funding match up to two hundred thousand for daycare. That, they're hoping that other counties would take a look at that, so they said, thank you for doing it.
Your man, Nick?
Uh, we'll give on thirty-eight ninety in the government of O Sage, Old G station site, thirty-five, thirty-eight, Pippin Avenue, O Sage, and Eaters, Newson, fifty, forty-four, Highway twenty, please.
Public comments?
I have one.
Yeah?
Some of you are in best mood today. Um, this isn't probably going to help, but I was at the meeting last week when a summit representative was here, and I kind of left and discussed after Sydney sucked down any public comments after two quick questions. I understand I could have stayed, or I could have spoke at the end of the meeting, but I probably would have said something that I would have regretted. So anyway, I sat down, we, I tried to choose my words carefully, and I came back, and I just wanted to say that I felt, shutting down that conversation was kind of a load of crap. Kaylee was right here. She was willing to answer questions. I think you guys need to understand that people in the country are concerned. They're upset, and if they're close enough to it, they're scared. And how can we do that if you don't want to speak? I think you guys also need to understand there's another side to the money that they're putting in front of your face. I urge you sometime to find a video, um, and there's several, you can find, um, a test explosion of the CO2 pipeline. Do some studies to see how that CO2 reacts, and then ask yourself if you want to live two hundred and fifty yards away from it. And after you do that, then you can come onto my place, and you can try to convince me to live two hundred and fifty yards away from it. See if you have any luck earning your extra, well, my ass not supported. You guys are supposed to be representing us. You're supposed to be listening to us. You're paid by us. I've been to enough of these meetings that I'm starting to question some of those things. I had somebody close to me early in this endeavor say, Dad, why you letting this upset you so much? I'll tell you guys the same thing I told him. I'm sorry. I'm sorry for my actions, my behavior. I'm sorry for my words. But you have to understand that at a bare minimum, I'm fighting for my property, the place I love, my home. And there's a chance that I'm fighting for my life, and not just mine, but my wife, my mom, my dad, my son, my daughter-in-law. We're all too close to it, and if you're not willing to stand for those things, what is the point? What's the point of anything? So, thank you.
I will make a remark to your comments, sir. I want you to know that I'm not trying to shut you down on your comments, but when we have people that come in here and makes that person up here talking feel attacked, and you guys have, the way you guys come in and are mad and have those tones, I don't appreciate that because she's doing her job. She's trying to do the best that she can. We're all trying to do our jobs, but when we-
She's getting paid to do it.
I understand that. I understand. I'm all about being equal. I want it to be equal. Like, if she will sit here and answer your questions, as long as she doesn't feel attacked, and if she doesn't know the answer, she doesn't know the answer, but you guys don't accept that. And that is a problem where I do not appreciate that kind of behavior in this kind of a meeting. That should not be condoned. If you guys want to come in here, if you guys want to come in here and have conversations, let's have a civil conversation, and I will allow it, but once it gets out of hand, I will shut it down. And I am only chair for a few more months. Then you can let anyone else in this room be chair, and they will run the meeting how they want. But if anyone in here feels attacked, especially me, or anyone up here talking, or if you guys feel attacked, I will make sure that that does not happen in this public space, because that should not happen. And that's why.
What's it supposed to do?
And I understand, what are we supposed to do? What am I supposed to do? So I'm getting backlash because I am trying to do something in this room and make sure nobody does that.
I think we could easily have some-
I think that you guys-
Other counties have a lot of that.
I understand, but she felt attacked. You guys attacked her every single time, and you do not allow her to talk when she wants to talk, and there's a, there is a problem. And I'm not trying to tell you that you guys are in the wrong or she's in the wrong. I am just simply trying to do my job and make sure this space in here is protected and that we don't have an outlaw riot going on. We, I definitely understand what you guys are going through. I do.
Do you?
I do, and I am very sorry, and that's why I approved the runaway ordinance. I am trying to do the best that I can.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
And I just like, that she gave a sheet, and it's online. There are meetings coming up in all these counties, questions and answers. That's where you need to go and talk with them. Because that's all there, they will be there. They'll, yeah, who can move the pipeline now? Who's digging it? Who's, uh, in charge of it? That's the people you need to go to and talk.
That's where I understand, Todd, but they are coming here. They are putting money in front of your face, and I think that you guys need to understand there's another side to that.
We do.
I feel we have the right to.
You do. You do have the right.
The question that I heard regarding that was the timing. The fact that they had laid out that all these meetings were upcoming in, uh, November, and that that's where people could go and ask questions. So I had several people asking me, why did we allow them to come before they had those other meetings?
They ask to come, that's what, that means. Anyone in this room asks to come and present, they're more than welcome to come and present anytime, and that's what we do. Okay, any more public comments?
I just wanted to, um, and this relates back to Kaylee too, the comments. The convention summit date last week to shelter in place was a dangerous misinformation statement based on, statement that could lead to death. Until the proof that is based on wind, temperature, and moisture are shared, typically moving to high ground is the best option, not sheltering in place.
Thank you.
And she's been here for four years, you know, so there's really no excuse for misinformation.
Any other public comments?
Thank you.
Going to adjourn the meeting at nine thirty-nine.